I gotta wait on something. I'd like to call this council meeting to order. Mayor Rod, would you please lead us in the pledge? Please remain standing for a moment of prayer or silent meditation. Thank you. Angie, would you do a roll call, please?
Councilman Holtz.
Present.
Councilman Curry. Councilwoman King.
Here.
Councilman Mishler.
Present.
Councilman Fish.
Here.
Councilwoman Hines. Councilman Crabtree.
Here.
Councilman Hanky. President Dawson.
Present. We have a quorum. Just a reminder for everyone in the audience to make sure your cell phones are turned off on airplane mode or vibrate, and when I saw the council members are speaking to their mics so they can be heard. Could I get a motion for minutes of approval for December 18, 2023 council meeting? That's a motion by Mr. Hanky, second by Mr. Crabtree. Should do a roll call vote. Okay. Is there a correction?
Yes. A correction on page 13. The bottom. Dallas Virgil should be Virgil, V-E-R-G-L. I'd second that with correction.
Thank you. Could I get a motion to approve the December 18, 2023 amended minutes?
Don't move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hanky, second by Mr. Fish. Angie, would you do a roll call vote?
Man Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes. Sorry.
All right. Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Aye.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hanky. President Dawson.
Aye. Minutes are approved. Can I get a... I let the record indicate that Councilman Curry has joined us. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of January 22, 2024 council meeting?
Don't move.
Got a motion by Mr.
Second with correction.
Crabtree, second by Mr. Fish. You have an amendment, correction?
Yes, page, page five. Under the third paragraph there, Councilman Fish should read "we weigh." We weigh it, W-E-I-G-H, as in weighing the clothes that Goodwill provides at their outlet. And a second one on page nine, under the Andy Jones Airport Director paragraph toward the bottom, should be the winter. Open throughout the winter as well.
All right.
Under Andy Jones Airport Director, the winter. That being said, I'd approve these minutes as amended.
Yeah. Motion by Mr. Fish, second by Ms. Hanky, that we approve these minutes as amended. Angie, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hanky. President Dawson.
Aye. Minutes have been approved. Can I get a motion for to approve the minutes of February 1, 2024 Finance Committee meeting?
We're moved.
Motion by Mr. Fish, they're second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Crabtree. Any corrections? Say none. Angie, would you do a roll call vote to adopt these minutes, please?
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hanky. President Dawson.
Aye. Yes.
On those very minutes, we just concluded that there is an arrived late. I'm not sure if that just means Alex Holtz and myself, or if that is myself. Does that mean that everyone who arrives late, like Mr. Curry says arrives late? Do we point that out each and every?
I do. If you're not here when I do roll call and you arrive after roll call, it is noted when you arrive and then I put beside your name "arrived late" because if we've already done votes, that's why.
Got that, Brett?
Make sure you... The minutes are right. Make sure you check the next ones. All right. Any other discussion? Do we do a roll call vote on that?
That was February 1, yes.
Okay. Can I get a motion for minutes of approval for February 5, 2024 council meeting?
We're moved.
Got a motion by Mr. Fish, they're second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Crabtree. Angie, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hanky. Dawson.
Aye. Minutes are approved. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of February 12, 2024 council meeting?
We're moved.
Got a motion by Mr. Fish, second by Mr. Crabtree. Angie, would you do a roll call vote, please, on the adoption of those minutes?
Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hanky.
Aye.
President Dawson.
Aye.
And I would just like to report minutes are current and up to date.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Another point of order, please?
Oh, depends on what it is.
So there are lists of draft. Are we now putting draft at the top until which point they are approved? Okay, very good. Thank you.
And I think they are not approved until we approve them. They are draft. I mean, I know it's not been added before, but they are not technically the approved minutes until we do approve them. Okay, we have presentation and introductions. Mayor Rod.
Yes. Hasn't arrived yet.
Thank you, Mayor. Unfinished business. There are no reports of council committees, audits on second and third reading. Angie, would you please re-
President Dawson, can we let the record reflect that Councilwoman Hines is on WebEx, please?
That's right. I meant to do that. Todd, do you hear us, see us, wave at us? All right, so we're good. Thank you, Angie. Would you please repropose ordinance 24-0-4505 by title, please?
Proposed ordinance 24-0-05, an ordinance amending the zoning map created pursuant to ordinance number 4370, the zoning ordinance of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, as amended to rezone 3811 South Main Street, Elkhart, Indiana, 46517, from R1 One Family Dwelling District to B1 Neighborhood Business District.
Thank you, Mr. Huber.
Good evening, Mike Huber, Director of City of Elkhart. This is a parcel of property.
A point of order, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Uh, we're not getting any audio from the podium on WebEx or Facebook. We, we can't hear anyone speak at the podium.
Todd, you can't hear anyone either?
Um, it goes in and out.
Okay. Would you shut those doors, too? I don't know if that affects it at all.
I, I thought our parliamentarian was cutting in for a point of order. I don't know that we had a motion and a second.
We did, we did.
I missed it. Thank you.
All right, could I get... John, you wanted to weigh in? Hold on. How's that?
John Esprah Corporation Counsel.
I think, I, I, yeah, never mind.
And if you could confirm now that the council members who are participating remotely can hear proceedings.
You guys can hear now?
Yes, sir.
Yes. Todd, you can hear?
Yes.
Well, they have this button up here now where I can actually turn the, uh, mic off, so my mistake. Can I get a motion and a second to pass this on, uh, second reading? A motion by Mr. Hanky.
Second.
Second by Mr. Fish. Council discussion. Mr. Huber.
Thanks. This is a parcel of property. It was a single-family home, zoned R1, adjacent to Dr. Burns Dental Practice on South Main Street, just north of the intersection of Michawakka Road. In late 2023, Dr. Burns submitted some building plans. He tore down the home. Um, in late 2023, Dr. Burns, um, submitted some building plans. He tore down the home, um, for tech review in order to be able to expand his practice. Um, and he also, at the same time, petitioned for rezoning. He received tech review approvals pending the, the approval of the rezoning. Um, again, the, the petition was to rezone from the R1 residential to match the existing business use of the dental practice. All of the other properties in that stretch of the corridor are all also currently zoned business. The house that was zoned R1 was the last remaining parcel. Um, additionally, the comprehensive land use plan calls for that area to all be developed as commercial. Um, this passed the planning commission with an eight-zero favorable recommendation at their February 6th meeting, and we'd ask for the council to also, um, approve this rezoning.
Council discussion. Thank you.
Mike, so do we know, um, it's going to be a building, an expansion of the current building?
It's going to be a new expansion, new building construction, expanding the existing practice, and it's also going to be parking lot. Correct.
Any other council questions? Seeing none. Thank you, Mike. Uh, this time I opened up to the public. Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak with regards to this ordinance?
Good evening. I'm Deborah Hughes, civil engineer for the project from surveying and mapping 2810 Dexter Drive in Elkhart. As Mike said, the, um, Dr. Burns has purchased the property next door for the purposes of expansion. Was the site plan in your package? It was not? Okay. So the plan is to add a 900 square foot addition to the southeast corner of the building. Right now, the building is on the, on the east side. The entrance is on the east side. And then the parking lot would be expanded to the south, and, um, the parking lot that's at the rear would be connected. He'd be providing drainage improvements, um, and expanding the parking for their customers. So I can provide this if anyone would like to look at it.
Thank you. Mr. Fish.
So, uh, thanks for being here, and it's nice to see an addition down in that, um, part of town. When the expansion takes place on the south side of the building, will there be enough room? Have you, have you...
Yes.
Done the site plan to give that hairdresser enough, uh...
Yes, there will be enough room. The addition is fairly small for the entrance, 900 square feet. But, um, the main purpose is to provide access to the lower level. It's a two-story building, and the current entrance comes in in the middle, so patients either have to go upstairs or downstairs. So this would be more of a handicap accessible entrance on the lower level. And so all the patient rooms are on the, on the first floor.
Will the utility pole need to be moved at all with that construction, the, the original there?
Uh, no. The intention is, um, to use the existing entrance, although now he, last week I heard they may want to put in a new entrance and abandon the old one. But either way, the utility pole would be out of the way.
Would have to mess with the utility.
It's in between the lots.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience? Seeing none, we turn it back to the council floor. Any other council discussion? Seeing none. Angie, would you do a roll call vote on second reading, please?
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hanky. President Dawson.
Aye. Got a motion from Mr. Hanky. Second and final. Second from Mr. Fish. Would you please read this ordinance by title and do a roll call vote, please?
Proposed ordinance 24-0-05, an ordinance amending the zoning map created pursuant to ordinance number 4370, the zoning ordinance of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, as amended to rezone 3811 South Main Street, Elkhart, Indiana, 46517, from R1 One Family Dwelling District to B1 Neighborhood Business District. Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hanky. President Dawson.
Aye.
Passes nine to zero on third and final.
Thank you. There are no ordinance and resolutions referred to committee tabled ordinances and resolution. Would you please read proposed resolution 23, 24-R-04 by title, please?
Proposed resolution 24-R-04, a resolution of the common council of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, pursuant to Indiana Code 6-1.1-12.1-11.3, waiving the noncompliance of SCG Acquisitions Company LLC, DBA Speed Grip Chuck Company, and Swanee Precision Holdings LLC, collectively Speed Grip, and authorizing Speed Grip to proceed with its application for tax abatement benefits.
I get a motion and a second to remove this from the table. Got a motion by Mr. Hanky, second.
Okay.
By Mr. Curry. Would you do a roll call vote on removal of this from the table, please, Angie?
Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hanky. President Dawson.
Aye.
Passes nine to zero to remove from table.
Uh, can I get a motion and a second to adopt this resolution? Got a motion by Mr. Hanky, second by Mr. Fish. Mr. Huber.
Good evening. Um, in this, uh, this is coming back for, uh, a second time. Um, we brought it to you before, after the misunderstanding. Last spring, in the spring of '23, um, the Speed Grip Chuck Company initiated the process of applying for tax phase-in benefits. That happened to coincide shortly, right before, um, the ad hoc business committee meeting. Um, it was our first time through the process, myself and, and Drew, and, and we thought it might not be a bad idea to have Speed Grip come and see the process and talk a little bit about the project to the ad hoc business committee. Based on that, uh, there were some misunderstandings after that. Um, we, we intended it just to be a presentation, uh, and then we continued our process of working with the EDC to get the final application materials. The Speed Grip Chuck folks thought they had satisfied all of the requirements of the process, not having gone through the process before. Um, and so we weren't very clear with them, and, and, um, as we went through, they had a timeline to install their, their equipment. Um, their, their phase-in is for installation of about a million dollars in personal, new personal property, um, to automate a number of their processes, um, and create four new jobs. Um, and so they went ahead and, and installed the equipment. I think last fall, we brought the, we brought forward the final application after we'd received all the, the materials from the EDC, and I think it came out during that discussion that they had already installed the, the equipment. And of course, that's not allowed by the statute. Um, but what the statute does allow is the statute does allow in cases where, um, there are some, there are some mistakes in the process, um, that the council can, in fact, waive the noncompliance, um, created by the misunderstanding. Um, and that would allow us to then go through the process of creating the ERA and granting the, uh, the, the resultant phase-in. And so this first resolution is the first part of the process. We're asking, uh, for you to approve the waiver of noncompliance. Though the resolution that's immediately following this one, um, actually establishes the ERA. It's a declaratory resolution. Um, just again, some highlights of the project. Um, they've been in business since 1946. Uh, they have new ownership, recent new ownership. Um, they made a million dollar, planned a million dollar investment in new personal property, create four new jobs with an average wage of $65,000 each. Um, the, uh, the total tax revenue that we anticipate the, the project to generate, it's a three-year phase-in. Over the three-year phase-in is, uh, $83,000, and their savings on that $83,000 will be $29,000. So I'm happy to address any questions you have about, um, this first resolution, or we can talk about both resolutions now, however you want to do it.
Erin or Tanya, do you have anything before we move on to the council?
I do not. Uh, yes, just a quick question. Um, has this happened ever before with any of our previous abatements that we know of? And what are we doing to prevent this from happening again?
Sure. So it, this particular instance, I don't believe we've, um, had this happen. Again, I've got a very narrow window of experience with this at the city. Uh, this is not our first waiver of noncompliance. Obviously, we, we corrected a couple of previous errors from, uh, from, from previous staffs where we used the waiver of noncompliance process. Um, we, we are and have created a whole set of new standard operating procedures, both how we interface with the EDC from the beginning of the process, and we've got a whole new set of new standard operating procedures, um, as we begin to look ahead to the CF1 compliance process, um, yet this year. And Erin, I think we're hoping to reach out to you as chair of the ad hoc business committee to share those SOPs with you and get your guidance in a couple of the areas. So, um, those are the things we're doing actively to make sure that we're not having these things happen again in the future.
You good, Erin?
Thank you.
Mr. Fish.
Thanks, Mike, for being here.
Hmm.
Pending approval here, when does the clock begin on their abatement, then?
Uh, well, so this would, this would create the ERA, and then approval is not actually tonight. We would have approval of the confirmatory and the MOA, uh, at the next council meeting. Um, and then I think if they get a, if, if the, if it's, if it's installed and they get assessed this year, then we, they would be up for compliance starting next year. Correct. It's not been assessed. It's not, we're not in any jeopardy of, I mean, it, it would be like they had, had not installed it yet.
This would begin a new abatement.
That's correct.
At the time, it's correct.
That's correct.
No retroact.
There was no previous abatement. Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Hanky.
You know, this is, uh, more than concerning. To be honest with you, we've not done this before. We've had three exceptions under this current management. We've never had this many, uh, of an error rate prior. So the question is, if you made a presentation, I'm not sure what was miscommunicated, what process actually started, and who thought what. But I would hope that, you know, we would do a self-audit and say, how do we stop this? We should have greater communication. We've been asking for it for some time now. Uh, you know, if it wasn't for council asking certain questions, how does this stuff, I'm reminded of Pontoon Place. You know, and we had to void that one because it was an already expended investment. And yet, we were ready, you know, to go out there, and yet a council member had a question, went out there. That doggone machine had been in operation for two years already. So there has to be a better check and balance. Um, we've talked about in the prior council and part of this council that we asked for some onsite type, um, audit tool, and we were assured that those things were going to happen. But here we are, and I'm not sure what part of the state practice we're even following at this point, because we've allowed people to extend their period. We've added in things that wasn't there prior. The numbers don't match, and we've come up with a creation of, we've not had this error rate before. Now, someone who has never applied through us is going to go back after the expenditure and get their abatement. So you got to just say, are we defending the business or are we defending the process, the state, uh, process? Because we're being asked to overlook that process four times now in recent months, four times. And I'm uncomfortable that we are getting this correct. This has been the biggest error so far that we're being asked to overlook. So what did the city do since May 30 of '23? How did they communicate? What happened? How did the mishap truly occur? They built thinking they were under contract of some kind for abatement?
That's correct. They, they had assumed that the appearance in front of the ad hoc business committee was the approval.
Even though no forms were filled out, nothing?
They, they didn't have the experience with the process, so that's correct.
We did. So our presentation did what for them if they came away thinking they were in the process? That's, that's my concern. Even with that conversation, we missed. So I'm wondering, how do we shore this up so we don't keep going down this path?
Thank you. Any other comments? None. Thank you, Mr. Huber. Uh, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak with regards to this resolution? Seeing none, we turn it back to the council floor. Any other council discussion? Seeing none. Angie, would you do a roll call vote? Would just your hand go up?
I'm sorry, Mr. Hanky.
Okay, yes.
Yeah, I, we've been down...
You going to say something different, or you just going to be critical of the process?
Well, I'm actually going to protect the state process and said we've been down this for years.
I know, but you, you pontificated, not asked a question. I'm just wondering.
I don't have to ask a question. I'm, I'm letting the rest of the council know my feelings on my vote.
We, we got them. We, we got that. We got that. We already got that.
And especially on your leadership that I don't appreciate either.
Angie, would you do a roll call vote, please, on the resolution?
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
No.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hanky.
No.
President Dawson.
Aye.
Passes seven to two.
Thank you. Would you please read proposed resolution 24, no, yes, that's it. 24-0-05, please.
Proposed resolution 24-R-05, a resolution of the common council of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, declaring a certain area to be an economic revitalization area for the purpose of granting tax phase-in benefits to SCG Acquisitions LLC, DBA Speed Grip Chuck Company, Swanee Precision's Holdings LLC.
Can I get a motion and a second to adopt this resolution?
We'll move.
Got a motion by Mr. Curry, second by Mr. Holtz. Council discussion. Mr. Huber? I think you spoke to it earlier, but...
This is just a follow-up that declares the ERA and starts the process to next meeting for confirming, confirming and granting the, the phase-in.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Huber? Seeing none. Thank you. I'll open it up for the public. Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak with regards to this resolution? Seeing none. We turn it back to the councils. Any more council discussion? Mr. Hanky?
I know, um, early on, four years ago, we talked about performance reviews and pay increases. Will be, this be reflective in any way in performance?
This is, this is not pertaining to...
Let's talk about something. We're making errors. We're going against state law.
This is not pertaining to that. You're out, you're out of order. You're out of order.
I don't mind.
Angie, would you do a roll call vote, please, on this resolution?
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hanky.
No.
President Dawson.
Aye.
Passes eight to one.
Thank you. Would you read proposed ordinance 24-0-06 by title, please?
Proposed ordinance 24-0-06, an ordinance amending various sections of the Elkhart Code of Ordinances to authorize a policy for the voluntary transfer of vacation time for employees experiencing medical emergencies, to authorize a policy to permit the limited carryover of unused vacation time, to authorize a policy reinstating, rehired employees within the city's vacation structure at pre-separation levels, and to authorize a policy regulating the vacation time for policy-level employees.
Thank you. No objections. We'll pass this on to second reading. Uh, there are no resolutions. There are no vacation hearings. Is there any other new business from the council? Hanky.
Um, on the Lerner Theater Board, January 10, uh, we've talked about this once. I never heard back. Um, we actually had a loss of 188,193 comparison to prior year, um, net receipts. And we were supposed to hear as to why that has occurred and projecting forward, what would it mean for 2024? Um, so I need to get back with someone, whoever's going to return the call, secondarily. Um, there was a, um, this is Public Board of Safety, February 13, '24. Uh, Chief Melanase, uh, presented a memorandum of agreement, Elkhart Community School Corporation and Elkhart Crossing Guard Services. The motion passed, but in these minutes, it doesn't reflect, um, cost of coverage, how many guards, at what corners. We don't know what is being paid for, but we do know, uh, it does cost the city taxpayers. So it'd be nice to have some clarity in that area.
Thank you. Any other new business? Seeing none. Reports. Yes.
Um, just want to let everyone know that Let's Talk Tuesday will be starting April 23rd, and the first one would be with Chad, starting with you. Uh, him at Matterhorn. So just want to keep everybody up to date with that.
Will Chad be, will he be serving food at the Matterhorn? This is your first one. It's kind of initiation is what you do when you have your first...
I'll get on that. I'll get on that.
Thank you, thank you. Reports of Mayor, Board of Works, Board of Safety, City Department is. Seeing none. Neighborhood associations. Mr. Curry, you got... Mr. Curry, you got anything?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd just like to report for the Pemmeran Neighborhood Association. We met yesterday at the Pemmeran Park Pavilion, and we talked about all the great things that are going on in our neighborhood and some things that we need to address. Somebody had graffitied the pavilion, so we turned that into 311. Very disappointed that people are going around our city doing that. But we talked about picking a date for our neighborhood cleanup, just like we had last year, and had a lot of good people help us. And we plan to do that again in May, and need to get with Patty on that. And we also talked about trying to target the seniors that live in our neighborhood and see what they need during that cleanup. And also, we were very happy that Officer Byers, at our last meeting, there was a request to bring back the police car because we have a lot of traffic coming through our neighborhood, speeding, and running the stop sign at Aurora, Aurora, well, I mean, Hawthorne Drive and Dying Heart. So he parked the car there, and everybody stops now, and it works. So we're glad he did that, and we also wanted to thank the street department. The street department came through our neighborhood and did a great job cleaning our streets, and it just makes the neighborhood look so much better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. Okay.
Mr. President.
I'm trying to scratch.
The Strong Avenue Neighborhood Association will be meeting Tuesday, March 12th, a week from tomorrow, at Mary Daly Elementary and the Library at 7:00 PM, located at 1735 Strong Avenue. All is welcome.
Thank you. Okay, this time, we have privilege of the floor. Is anyone in the audience who would like to speak with regards to anything on the jurisdiction of the Elkhart City Council? That was not on the agenda? If you want to speak, you got to come up. You have to come up. All of you, one at a time, however you want to do it. If you're a team, you can come as a team, however you want to do it. You tell us. You got to make sure you're speaking to the mic because we need you on record.
Hello, council.
Hello.
We are with the Parent Coalition for Child Safety and Wellness, and each of us are here to give some testimony and invite you to an upcoming event.
All right, you can tell us your name, and you need to speak more into the mic.
Rachel Van Alstine.
Thank you.
All right.
Ladies, before you get started, you just need to sign in on that sign-in sheet so that I have it for permanent record.
My name is Tiara Porterhouse, 38, mental health advocate, community builder, artist, content creator, and also a part of the Parent Coalition. I've been working with children off and on since my teenage years and have never heard as many horror stories as I have within the last year. I've witnessed our youth openly admit that they don't feel safe at school and why they don't feel safe. I've had conversations with youth with behavioral issues who have the potential to be their very best selves if their basic needs were met, not just at home, but especially in school, not to mention the rising of bullying and death by suicide. The new saying, according to one of my babies, is bully or get bullied. We need all hands on deck for the safety and the sake of our children, not just parents, but faculty and community. What used to work for conflict resolutions is no longer working. It's time for new alternative programs, Better Together. I admire how the Parent Coalition bridges the gap between parent, child, and school faculty in order to make sure the students' needs are met, so that they can thrive academically and even emotionally with the proper support. This is what made me join the Parent Coalition with no hesitation. I don't have any children of my own, yet I am still a parent within my family and within the community. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Melissa Shane. I was invited to join the Parent Coalition. I'm a current MSW student at IUSB, and I'm doing my first practicum with the United Village. I'm also a manager over the skills coaches for the Bowen Center of Elkhart County. So behavior, social, emotional, mental health is my field. I've been doing this for many years. I've seen a lot of problems, especially since COVID. We have a lot of kids, the kids that were kindergarten or first grade then, most of them can't read. There's a lot of things going on. Ultimately, I decided this was something that I should be a part of just because of the personal stories that are connected to me. One of my main driving factors right now, I'm sure you guys have all heard of Woody Lewis, he was one of my daughter's best friends growing up, and he was murdered a couple years ago. And I've seen a lot of children's lives be destroyed by gun violence. So not only him losing his life, but the person that was convicted of the crime, who was also 16, who I also watched grow up, knew him since elementary school, very, very talented athlete, and then just everything went downhill from there. So I figure if I can be a part of this coalition, there's something that I can do to help prevent some things like that. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Gabriela Madrigal, and I am a parent and part of the Parent Coalition. I joined about a year and a half ago because of my daughter's bullying behavior from staff, and I wanted to be part of a solution. I did not want to be part of a problem. So with the Parent Coalition, we are trying to work with schools, which we have hit very hard rock places, and we are trying to get everyone to work with us. It's really hard getting the board to meet with us, getting a lot of information, even with the new law that we helped pass with our wording of the schools having to document all of the incidents. We found that schools are not doing that, and I myself also advocate for other families. I have seen that not only is a minority being left behind, but they're being silenced. And so that has driven me to work with the community even more and help parents even more. A lot of the time when we're doing events, I have parents that come up to us. I have had two reports where I have had to file police reports during our meetings with children with bruises all over their bodies that were weeks old. And again, we are not trying to be part of the problem. We are not against the school. We are trying our hardest to work with the schools. My voice is cracking, and it's very shaky because I'm very passionate about it, and I know that you guys would be too if you guys heard all of the horror stories that we hear. We want help for our kids. We want resources for our kids. We do not want our kid to be another statistic. We do not want them to be another casualty of suicide. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
And my name is Rachel Van Alstine, and I'm a mother of two and an Elkhart resident. I was born and raised in Elkhart, starting at Mary Beck and graduating from Memorial in '03. A few of you were my teachers. My daughter graduated from Memorial in 2018, and my son is currently a seventh grader at Westside. In June of 2022, I joined alongside the friends and family of Rio Alred and other parents as we shared the common purpose of advocating for our children and ensuring children's safety within Elkhart community schools. I had recently transferred my son for the second time in the district at this time, as my son has experienced horrific bullying and abuse within our schools over the last eight years. As parents, we quickly learned that our children's incidents were not isolated. In fact, we learned that our children were just a few of the masses of children that were experiencing the same unhealthy and unsafe environments within our schools. One of the most disturbing truths that we uncovered is that our schools are not documenting the bullying and abuse of our children. Each of us having similar stories and reporting the abuse, having meetings with teachers, principals, and administration, only to pull our children's records and there be no proof as to what our children experience in their care. And no other institution is as fathomable as we are all mandated reporters in the state of Indiana. However, we learned that each school district is, and I quote, "allowed to police themselves with no oversight or checks and balances from the state," causing massive gaps in child safety within our schools and communities. Last year, our Parent Coalition in Rio's Rainbow advocated and worked with legislators to amend anti-bullying bill, House Bill 1483, with our language. Schools shall document bullying and abusive behaviors of a victim, which took effect July 1, 2023. Why did it take a coalition of parents to make this the law? Thereafter, our Parent Coalition formed a statewide community collective of dedicated parents and volunteers to pursue our mission of child safety, as we learned in our year of advocacy that these safety risks were across all districts. Our Parent Coalition currently represents parents across six local school districts, all with similar stories of abuse and neglect from their school districts. Our Parent Coalition openly declares that we are both non-political and nonreligious, as we have all different facets in our group, and believe that regardless of our affiliations, it should not matter when it comes to child safety, as children's lives and well-being should be at the forefront. It's important to understand that while we call it bullying, because it's children, we are describing the physical, mental, emotional, verbal, and sexual abuse of children by other children. The word bullying is merely an umbrella word that masks the truth and severity as to what our children are experiencing in our schools. I wish I could say that after Rio's tragedy, things within ECS have changed. However, it is apparent that they have learned nothing. As I recently had to transfer my own son again for the third time in this district from Northside in October of this year, after experiencing dozens of incidents of bullying that are still left undocumented or incorrectly documented as I speak with you this evening. We have several other ECS parents on our Parent Coalition with the same instances this year, even after the passing of House Bill 1483, which requires documentation. Despite our personal experiences, we fully recognize that the issues we are facing surrounding child safety and education are systemic, and openly invite our community to walk alongside us to advocate and speak truth and determine resources to the identifiable gaps in child safety within our schools. And it should be clear that they are identifiable. In fact, in attempting to discuss these identifiable gaps in child safety with our local public schools, we are continually told that there is not funding or resources to provide what would be needed to ensure the safety of our children. But in the same breath, they tell us they will not speak this out loud, as they have been put in a position by the state to be more concerned with liability than the safety of our children. With this understanding, not only are we here to stay, but we are merely just getting started, as we have been given no other choice. Our children quite literally hang in the balance. In honor of Rio and several other children lost to suicide in our community, we will be co-hosting a night of remembrance and truth-telling next Thursday on March 14th, which is the two-year anniversary of her passing. This gathering is a sacred and brave space of honoring our children and their truth. As parents, we are our children's voices, so not only do we have a seat at the table, but even more, a responsibility to our children to show up. We are here to exemplify their voices and ensure that they are heard. We ask that you join us for this gathering and invite others within our community that should be present as it relates to the safety of our children in Elkhart and throughout Indiana. In choosing to be present and collectively tell our stories, we build unity, we declare love and truth over silence, and we learn that we are not alone through this process. Thank you all.
Thank you.
And we do have flyers to give you all for next week.
Would you please, Pat, give it to our Angie down there? She'll make sure we get them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in the audience? Seeing none, we turn it back to the council floor. Acceptance of communications and no scheduling of committee meetings. Acceptance of communications?
No move.
Got a motion to accept communications. Is there a second?
Okay.
Second by Mr. Curry. Angie, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Aye.
Councilman Curry? Yes.
Councilwoman King?
Yes.
Councilman Mishler?
Aye.
Councilman Fish?
Yes.
Councilwoman Heinz?
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree?
Yes.
Councilman Hanky?
Aye.
President Dawson?
Aye.
Passes.
All right. We ready to adjourn?
No, I was late. I want to stay a little longer.
All right. All right, I'm going to adjourn this meeting since all the business has been taken care of. We are adjourned.[1688.63]